We'll be contacting that gentleman and the presiding commissioner.
Okay, so I would say on that let's wait till... I hate for us to continue paying when we know... Does that make sense as far as issuing paychecks when we really don't have a contract?
For next year, you mean?
Right.
Right.
Right. So, finish off this year, but I have some concerns about if we don't get some of this straightened out, departmental issues with that. So, we just want to make sure that we are doing things correctly.
County do.
Well, see, he was hours in and Goodhouse left. He took that job also. Job to get paid.
So, out of the county bank.
The same?
I think they're paying also.
Got a contract either?
A hundred dollars a month or is that what you guys are paying, a hundred dollars a month?
That's correct.
I know because I'm the one that pushed for that. You know, we had such a hard time finding anyone that would serve in that capacity.
Is he under contract is what Ron is asking?
With the county?
With the county.
Or is he just paid like we're paying him?
He, I'm, the position that he serves is an appointed position, which was, I believe, also appointed by the city as well. I mean, he's appointed as the emergency management director for the city of Edina.
So, he doesn't have a contract either?
No, he's appointed. He's not contracted. He's appointed by the commissioner and I believe that's part of, there's probably a statute that governs that.
Well, I'm an appointed position and I am not.
So, we don't have to worry about it so much then? We just need some more transparency.
More what?
Transparency.
Well, I personally figure you just have to need a contract.
So?
Yeah, you, you need something.
And I'm not sure he needs to be doing both, both town, county.
I don't have a problem with that because you're not having, you're not having conflicting. It's all one thing.
The county one doesn't happen before. That's what we have.
I think the position, that they, I, I think that it will be fine. I think it will be easier than, right, it will be easier to have one in the whole area than have two. It would be like having two mayors.
Probably the county will probably, the city will have their own.
Well, it's an important position in a day and age where we're in.
If you had two people, really, it would be like right hand and a left hand. If we had, if a disaster happened and it involved the city and the county, then you'd have two people buttoned in.
I think one would be better than two.
And at least this guy will be in charge of the whole thing.
Something does happen, it's one person taking over.
It explains itself if you, if you go to the meeting, it really does. And he has delegates below him, so he'd be dealing with Eric and the county commissioner.
We all would get together, he would lay up a plan of action.
So, it's not like he's the only guy.
We would, uh...
Yeah, what he's doing right now is, um, he's working with the regional SEMA representative on establishing the emergency management plan. And that's a county-wide deal, including Edina, including the Edina Fire Department, including the Edina Police Department, you know, including all of the Edina businesses and school and all kinds of stuff like that. There's all kinds of plans and things that need to be made and put in place, just to require state level. So, I mean, in that way, he does fulfill a needed, well, yeah, I mean, unless one of you guys want to step up and put together the emergency management plan, really.
Well, you know, I'm not contesting the position. I'm, I'm saying we just need to make sure that we have a contract.
We need to make sure that we are in compliance with the Department of Labor. It's what we're more concerned about than anything.
Right, so, that's the part we need to examine as far as the budget is concerned.
We need to make sure that our, our Ts are crossing.
Oh, that county will block your two. Maybe we can get together with him and come up with something that'll satisfy everybody.
Any other questions?
And you'll have that discussion.
I will have that discussion.
Give him a title. Everybody likes titles.
Oh, nobody likes titles.
Street maintenance fund, we have budgeted about seventy-five thousand dollars. I know that's not panicky. That we will have to reexamine when we get a, a different plan as far as this is what we're going to do in place.
Another grant needed there, isn't it?
Streets are expensive.
Especially ours.
The recreation fund, we still have a balance remaining in there for the ball association and insurance. So, that's why it's looking that way. Let's just do a real quick final on that page four. They're showing what our beginning balances are on each fund, what the projected revenues are, what the projected expenditures are, and what we expect the balances to be based on that information. In the governmental funds, which are your, essentially, public funds, you're predicting that the balances are going to go down. A lot of that is because of the street fund where we budgeted more, we'll still have a balance there. Our proprietary funds, which are the ones that are paid by revenues collected, will also be having a decrease. However, the operating, the income is, operating expenses are being covered by the revenue. The reason we're going to have deficit is because of the capital outlay purchases that we are budgeting, both in water and sewer and in sanitation. But as far as the actual operating expenses, we have plenty of revenue coming in at this point. Everything's covered. I'm a lot more comfortable with the budget this year than I was a year ago because we had so many uncertainties.
Well, we don't have no major disasters, huh?
And we are financially stable.
There's just no way we're getting more funds from the streets over here, though.
We can look for grant money if, if we can find any.
We need to be looking actively.
I don't know if Ron will do that for us or not. He tried last year, but...
We probably need to put together a delegate off the board. We tried to actively seek it, find it somehow. Now's the time to be applying. We probably should have been applying already.
Well, and there are multiple areas you can be looking for grants. You know, our police department for some of the things that they would like.
Right.
Um, to get up to date is one area.
Body cameras.
Correct, correct.
Training.
And the energy grants that we just talked about, and streets. So, there are several areas. It would be nice if we had somebody who's good with how to do some research.
Anybody have any other questions? I wonder if we need to load on this Peggy proposed budget.
It has to be implemented prior to any expenditures. So, that's why we normally do it in December so that you can spend money in January. Because you can't spend any money in January until you have approved your budget. So, as long as it's approved sometime this month or prior to making any expenditures, which is kind of a problem because you usually have a payroll where you get, we have a new deal. So, basically, in December it's approved.
Does anybody want to approve it now or does anybody want to process this?
I think we need to do it.
You would not like a week to go through it?
I think Peggy is very good at her job and I trust her for it. Peggy put in a...
She put in a lot of work, yes.
All hours. She's got some pretty good shape right now.
Yes, and I just want to make sure that nobody wanted to do it, so...
And I'm, I'm building the other ways that we need to be getting this shared and mindful.
And you can always amend it. You just have to amend it prior to making the expenditures that you want.
The chair with the entertaining motion for the proposed budget, the year of twenty seventeen. Ron makes a motion.
I will second that motion, Peggy.
The name? All in favor? Thank you.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Does that, does that explain itself? Is that self-explanatory?
What I gave her?
Yeah, about the tax difference?
No.
No.
It's not as straightforward as you would expect it to be.
Taxes that never are.
Citizens and comings? No citizens? No comings? Monthly bills? Does anybody have a chance to go through the monthly bills?
Wait, I have a comment. I just wanted to say thanks for everybody that came out to the Christmas celebration. Edina was busting with people and things to do on Friday and I thought it was a really good event.
It was, yeah, of course it was.
It was enjoyable. One question on a forthcoming LLC bill. Mark Ross will get this reimbursed, the city.
Oh, I just put that note on there.
What's this?
Fourth page, oh.
That was a sewer project.
Something to do with heat wasn't hooked up or?
Yeah, it was, uh, dead.
Puzzle or something?
Yeah.
It's what time? I can't hear you, furnace is running.
Yeah. There was a service line that wasn't connected and, of course, it's, it's not that it was really true. There's nobody's fault. It, it, the way it ran out there was pretty bizarre. So, we had him come back and we opened some taps that we thought was maybe possible and it wasn't. And then we did some camera work and we figured out where and when this line runs way down the street, hooks into totally separate lines. So, to get him hooked up, um, you know, Harold basically come in and...
Straightened it out.
I think that I could, it, it was a nightmare. But it, it got to the point where the water was backing up into the basement. But that's why it's been so long. I mean, you know, they did the lining this last summer, so it took a couple of months to even show up. But like I said, that's all, it'd be reimbursed.
This would be reimbursed from then?
Right, okay.
So, basically, they took a more direct route to the main?
I just put in some...
Well, what happened was we thought that, in most assumptions, your service goes right out to the sewer in front of your house. His comes out to the street, takes a ninety, runs down the street about a hundred and fifty, two hundred feet, and hooks into a totally separate main because of elevation reasons. But until we got in the basement to start noticing all that, I mean, it just, it, it was, like I said, really no infall on anybody, but just one of them, one of them deals that was, we ran into, I guess. So, we had to dig it up and retap it because it was, it'd been, actually, his wasn't even on the lining part. It would have been on the, the digging part where his got missed. But like I said, that'd have been two hundred and fifty feet from the house.
Did they put that, uh, thing in the ditch for him to?
They couldn't there because, see, that's what I say, we, we assumed at the time when they went through it, that was just an old abandoned service. It didn't look active and it was no logical place for it to be where it was at. So, no, it didn't, that's what I'm saying, it didn't even get, it didn't get hooked in. It got dug through and then they replaced that line. That's what that's for.
Hopefully, we'll have another one of those.
No, it, it, yeah, it's, it really, truly, it should be a fluke deal because it, it was just kind of an unexplainable deal unless you'd known when the house was put in and how they did that, you'd had no idea.
So, it was one of those things again that wasn't mapped?
Well, it, it's a service line. No services are mapped.
Mapped, okay.
Yeah.
Are they going to be now?
Well, we've tried to write some down. We know any, like those, those, those we wrote down that are, have got odd turns. And even when it come down to hook into the main, it, it forty-fived again down before it come in the main. So, once it made a ninety up front of the house, nineties come down the street. Well, then it forty-fived again to go back. So, that line is so, I, I don't understand the forty-five at the end of the line that it, but they took that forty-five out and directed it straight in. So, we've made those notes on our maps to, maybe for future reference or no. I mean, that's what that goes for.
Anybody else, is there any other bills standing out that you want to go? All in favor of that? Who wants to make a motion to pay the bills? Delbert? You will second?
I'll second.
Done. All in favor? Memo from Mark Ross. Everybody? Any questions from Mark that we need to write down in front of the email back?
As long as they update them with this first municipal pipe, I guess he'll be good. Let us know when they, uh, make that decision.
I think that, uh, last...
Bear Brothers, we are waiting to confirm whether the Bear Brothers have completed all the concrete work.
Right.
Thank you so much.
That's the only one that looks like he needs to get back to us on it.
So, in other words, there's no pay request or anything. This is just an update. Whenever municipal pipe deal and their subcontractor is finished, that's when we will figure our liquidation damages. Alrighty. Partner reports.
We didn't, we don't have a lot. Um, I did talk to Mark today since you got done reading that and he's working on the, trying to get that deal closed out with municipal pipe, we're working on some concrete work, but...
Is that the street?
Well, we received some of those holes around there and there's really good point repairs. See, how those are supposed to be concreted, so I discussed that with him this afternoon. I did talk to him, so, um, as far as that, I don't have a lot. Um, we've been getting ready for winter. Got to get the mogs in and things done like that pretty well. I guess ready for the first snow. Maybe the second snow. I guess our first one was about a half a snow. It was pretty wet.
Second will be half of what we're supposed to get.
Who knows? But I think we're pretty well ready, so we've been going through all that stuff. Otherwise, like I said, living on budget, not what we got accomplished this month.
On that old, on the Ford, the truck you were talking about replacing? Didn't that have a snow blade at one time?
It, it has a plow on it. It does have a plow. It's got a...
It's one dirty get drive in.
Yeah, I think so. I think it's just a eight-foot plow. That's what them old plows were, yeah. Yep.
You are leaving me?
Yep, Wednesday. So, the tentative plan right now is come Mondays and Thursdays. For a while, we may just, we may all three jump on trash so we can keep on our pace and get things done and just go from there, so... Yeah, Wednesday will be his last day.
You want to try to create a winner of three, you said?
Yeah, I don't think that'll be a problem for the winter. Three plow trucks and...
What do you propose to be in the summer?
Oh, we talked about maybe, you know, we'll see how it gets along. I mean, if we can make it with three, we'll run as we can, you know, save what we can on money. But if not, we may, the biggest extra in the summer that, that ties you up is, is, of course, the mowing, the weed eating, spraying and things of that. But if we could get by till May or something, you know, maybe you can get a high school kid, pay him part-time, you know, put his thirty hours in a week, he can mow and weed eat and take care of that stuff. And, you know, by August, he goes back to school, we can kind of finish up the odds and ends, you know, and we'll just, we just have to see how it goes. But like I said, right now, to, to help save the cost, I'm sure coming into winter, like I said, three of us can handle what we got. Trash will be the main thing and, like I said, we may just all three jump on it and try to keep up, then get it done. Go from there.
Any other questions for that?
Do we want to try to see if there's a body out there?
I don't know. I, like I said, I think for now, I think it would be better just to run the three we got and see what happens. I mean, like I said, cost-effective wise. I mean, like I said, kind of play it by ear, but I think we can handle, I'm, I'm, I'm sure we can handle it, like I said, through the winter. I mean, actually, the time you get on the mowing and weed eating and spraying, that takes a lot of time in the, in the warm season, but...
Well, we'll try that then. We'll see how that works out, running into difficulties.
Yeah, we'll just have to, like I said, kind of play it by ear. Long as we don't have anybody else go down with broken bones or anything, you know, not a lever that catch you in a pinch, but, so... That's all I've got.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ron.
I don't have anything for you. I did talk to, um, the guys that are getting ready. They're hoping, they're going to try next week to try and dig footings and stuff for our generator pad, but that's all weather dependent, but, um, that, that's the only thing that's going to be going on at the wastewater plant this winter.
How's that at?
The generator won't be here, be available for pickup or be on-site until mid-January.
Where, where's it located?
It's going to go in between the building and the fence on the north side. That's where the power comes in. They're going to set a new meter base against the fence and they're going to have everything, the junction box and all that stuff right there on the fence, so the power will come out of the generator over to the fence. And then there'll be our disconnect switch and everything there to where when we fire the generator, we can disconnect the power coming from the pole and it'll run through the same power that the Amarin runs in, into the building.
Is that, is that one of those switches where if you throw it to generator, it automatically?
It disconnects Amarin's power so we don't run power in on there.
Can't get them both at the same time?
We can't zap them.
Okay.
We, yeah.
I think we voted for the automatic.
Well, not so much automatic, but it...
It, it disconnects the power, so...
It's tied to both breakers. If you throw one on, it throws them off.
Yes.
It don't disconnect.
Yes.
It's kind of locked into transfer switch.
Yeah, transfers power, exactly. That's the correct terminology.
And we got the automated one, right?
That's...
When the power goes down, it automatically picks up.
After, after so many minutes, it, it fires the generator and...
It runs for so long before it picks back.
And then it...
I just want to make sure it was disconnected.
Yeah, it will disconnect automatically.
I, I don't know much about them. Eric would know, I mean, I just know that when we did the, that was what he proposed. But that's all I have. If there's any questions?
Your inflow is down?
It, it's a, it's higher than it, um, has been in November in the past. We're, we're down below our design flow. We're not running over a hundred percent, so that's, that's a plus. I, I, I don't have an answer for that. I, I really don't. I've talked to Mark and, and some other... I don't know if that happens to be, you know, I mean, we, the water lines and stuff, I don't know if it happens to be... I know the water usage, water loss is up compared to what it has been in the past. And I don't know if that happens to be, um, getting in through laterals. And that's why I'm seeing an increase in inflow, um, because it should, it shouldn't be coming through the main with all the project work. So, that's something where maybe some more smoke testing or something, since our lines are good, some smoke testing in the summer to see if sewer laterals and stuff like that are, are broke up. And, um, when you really get to punching the numbers, an, an extra, um, sixty thousand gallons a day is a very, very small leak, you know, getting into the sewer line. So, um, that's about where I, I figure we should be, um, down to like a hundred and sixty thousand gallons a day. We're running like two fifteen to two twenty right now. Now, this month, we're down below our one sixty so far for this month, but, um, we haven't had any increase in rainfall or anything either, so, um, we just have to keep plugging along and looking at it and see if we can...
Alrighty, any other questions for Mike?
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.
I talked to Kelly. He said everything's going pretty good. Uh, not really having any issues that he knows about other than, uh, the new bar. It's been a little slow to close. Uh, one officer went by the other night, had a talk with him, told him they need to close it down at the time. And, uh, he said he'd be talking to the owners about that and getting that lined out. But other than that, everything's business as usual for the city. But other than that, everything's business as usual for the city.
Sounds good. All's quiet.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions? I do not know, maybe cannot remember any. Anybody else remember any unfinished business?
I'm blocked. Uh, Mark said.
Did you see the real picture I mentioned?
Yes.
Remember that?
Yeah, I did. My code was, I found the picture of the girls' Christmas photo.
We did, I mean, we discussed it for today again.
Right, we discussed it for, right.
We have a, we have a, I didn't change it down, but
Which one?
Right.
Okay.
In that for someone in your My, my, I guess you do.
We did look at the one of the other
Is that a printout, too, or was it? That was cheap enough, didn't it?
It's cheap enough, but it also requires internet service. Which we need to check into with Mark Twain and see how many locations they were willing to provide us with.
Right. It's part of the
It provided us two, two places.
With two, we'll see if there's sweet dollars in it, but three. We're still in the process of getting more answers at this point in time. We may have it brought up in the next doctor or agenda, but at this moment, we're pretty slow about getting answers, so.
I just want to slide on, keep up, if we can.
Yes, I'm gonna slide.
Okay, good.
Alright, any other old unfinished business anybody can think of? Moving on to new business. Is there any new business?
What's up?
I do not know what that is. Well, I have, uh, speaking of business, I have come down to the new establishment. They seem to be very well in order. They seem to be, uh, they seem to be very courteous. I think they're working very, very nicely. Any comments or not? Quick eyeball, nails in. If there's no new business, we'll go to all the comments. We'll go over the comments. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I made a motion to adjourn.
I'll say it. All in favor?
Thank you for having me, sorry to take this
Appreciate that.
Competition's good for business.